Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town Council Workshop of May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. I will start with roll call. Counselor Chapel.
Present.
Counselor Maguire.
Present.
Counselor Meany.
Present.
And I am Counselor Carter, and we have with me Town Manager Nate Rudy. First item on the agenda is going to actually be one that I add because as on May third, two thousand and twenty-three, we received a letter of resignation from Michael Curtis, and I'm going to read that into the record. "To whom it may concern, it with a heavy heart that I am submitting my letter of resignation from the Town Council effective immediately. Due to personal health issues with caring for an immediate family member and starting a new career path starting this month, I will not have the time to commit to serving on the council. It has been a pleasure to represent my community over this past year, and I have been honored to have served the town. I wish the council the very best and will still be involved as much as I can moving forward. Please be well, take care, and continue with the amazing changes the council is dedicated to implementing. Warm regards, Michael Shawn Curtis." So according to the, first off, the letter of resignation comes too late for us to put the remaining two years of his term on the ballot for June because the ballot have to be submitted by April nineteenth, so they've already been submitted. It can't be written, can't be used either because you actually need to list the opening on the ballot, and that will not be listed. There are only two three-year term openings listed on the ballot. The charter designates that the council is then allowed to appoint someone to the, to the open vacancy until the next annual municipal election. So it would be appointed whenever that appointment is made until the following election, which is this coming June, two thousand and twenty-four. So I kind of looked at the calendar to give us some options, and there are three. So I'm going to lay them out, and then we can just kind of talk about which option we'd like to go with. If we are looking to try to appoint someone in before this council session ends, that would be the June sixth meeting, we would have to have a deadline of May twenty-six for applications. And if we open the application period tomorrow, if we made the announcement, that would give us seventeen calendar days between opening the call for applications and the deadline. The second option, so that's option one. The second option is to appoint it at the first meeting of the new council, which is June twentieth, and the deadline would be June ninth. And again, if we opened applications immediately, that would give you thirty days to obtain applications. The third option is wait until the, the new council is seated on June twentieth, and then discuss as a council the timelines that you would be able to use. Your next available meeting would be July eighteenth, and so your deadline would be July seventh, and then you would just open the period based on that seating, which would be June twenty-first. So again, you'd be at seventeen days if you waited until the new council was seated and you wanted to appoint at the July, you'd still, you'd be at the same short period as now if you were trying to get it done for the June sixth. So those are your three options. I think the third option's kind of out. And generally speaking, we have in the past sworn members in at the first meeting, but usually if we can get them to come into the town office after the election, they can be sworn in prior to that, and then there are already seated council members on that June twentieth meeting. So thoughts on option one or two or three? Krista or Marty, you like option two?
Yeah, I think we, the more time we allow for applications, the better. And then I also like the idea of the individuals who will be serving with this person for the next year, appointing that person. So I, I prefer option two.
Yep. Dan?
Yeah, I, I agree. I don't, I think one is just too, too much of a rush. And I also would like the opportunity to have some conversation about what the application process looks like because I think it's time to up our game a bit. I think we've been just a little too lax in how the process has worked. And I think we have an opportunity now to put in place something that's a little bit more demanding and provides us with a little bit more information about the candidates before we have to make a decision.
So would you be looking for more additional information than the volunteer application currently? Or just so we can start the open, you know, we want to get the word out if you've got thirty days?
I don't think, yeah, I wouldn't do anything to slow it up. But I guess, for instance, when we get applicants, I would like them to be sent, you know, the executive summary of the comp plan. I'd like them to be sent a copy of the current budget. And there's probably, you know, the committee policy, the TC rules. Those are probably four things I would like all the candidates to get, and I intend to quiz them all on those things when I see them.
Well, let me ask Nate, this is, there is some new council training, correct?
Uh, we have attempted to do a new council onboarding. And we, you remember, we've created that manual that included the material for council. It's not so formal that it can't be adjusted, but we can adjust it to fit whatever the needs are for the council and the new candidate.
There is the MMA training, I think, is that, am I being mistaken?
No, no, I knew that they did with the latest hire. They've been doing onboarding, which is what I think Dan is kind of speaking to. I don't think the budget piece is probably in there, but the rules are, I think, and committee policy. So then the question would be, would, if you're going to have your new council seated and you appoint someone, would you send the new counselor with the appointment through that same training together? Or would you make them do that in advance? Is the real question.
The MMA training?
No, this onboarding.
Oh. No, I guess I don't think it would make sense to do it in advance in my mind.
Yeah.
But I think there are several documents that they should be familiar with.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the one concern I have with, I like the idea of this being just a new structure for all of our committee appointments.
Yeah.
But the one, the one thing I'm struggling with a little bit is we're not, we don't, when someone's running for election, they don't have to do all that. They could really just not know anything and run. I hope that's not true, but um.
We do have the candidates night, which has been a tradition.
I, I would like to see them appear here during, if we're appointing for questions. And then also, I, I would like to see like a bio or something.
Yeah, sort of resume, so fill out the volunteer.
It doesn't have to be that formal as a resume, but just something written that.
Volunteer app, bio slash rezo if they want to, and then attend the June twentieth meeting. Plan on attending the June twentieth meeting.
I mean, you know, I'm not trying to.
Well, to your point, Dan, you know, it, what they know and what they don't know is a interesting way to identi, to make your decision. I mean, if you have someone who comes and has taken the time to do all of those things, it demonstrates a desire to, to hit the ground running versus someone who maybe doesn't, hasn't read the comp plan.
Yeah, I'm not.
I mean, it's a way to help.
Yes, exactly. I mean, basically, it's just trying to inform the decision. I'm not trying to put hurdles in front of people. Someone who comes with a lot of enthusiasm and no experience could be
Great.
more valuable than someone with tons of experience, but it's jaded in their experience.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, it's, but I think that anybody who, and I'm not trying to scare anybody off, just the opposite.
You're trying to get applications, Dan.
I would like to get more people interested. But there, but in all fairness to the people who are taking on the responsibility, I want them, it's only fair that they do it with their eyes wide open.
Know what they're getting into.
Yeah, I don't want somebody who tells us six months from now, this is more than I bargained for.
Right.
I don't want to go through that again.
Yep. Okay, so I will, we'll work with Nate to get that posted as soon as possible.
And, and what you want is the application.
Volunteer application.
Or and/or a resume.
Nope, volunteer application filled out, and then they may, they should attach at least a bio or some type of resume, and then.
And plan to attend.
Plan to attend the June twentieth to answer any questions the council may have.
I think the materials, Dan, maybe.
I think on the onboarding, that should definitely happen.
Well, but I think if we get an application, we should tell them to, that it would be a good idea to reference the things Stan has mentioned.
Either send them the links or send them the documents. There's no harm in doing that.
No, there isn't, but like I said, I say on the opposite thought. If you want something, you know, dress for the job you want, the job you have, like, do the work, but.
Oh, well, yeah.
Just, just my opinion.
No, I don't disagree with that.
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could, we could stay in the announcement, seeking applications that, you know, from, you know.
Familiarity with.
With, you know, comp plan and budget, et cetera.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Would be beneficial or something.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, if you want to do that instead, that's fine. I, I don't mind greasing the skids a little more than that. And making sure that, you know.
Yeah.
Our information on our website is not necessarily easy to find. If we at least send them the links for those things.
Well, we could put the links in the announcement.
Put the links in the posting.
Yeah, that's.
That would, that would, that would suffice for me so that people
Okay.
would know where to get those things.
All right, and the deadline on that will be June ninth?
June ninth.
Yep. In order to slow it, it'll have us plenty of time to get it in the packet. Okay, now back to regularly scheduled programming. The first item is Depot Road deed discussion, and I believe the owner, Diana Ridion?
Ridlin.
Ridlon, okay, I see that now. And we have this in our packet. And she has provided another copy of the packet material, but there's also a cover letter on the top that is new. So if you want to just introduce your, yourself and where you live, you'll need to sign in as well.
I'm Diana Ridlin, I live at Fort Chelsea Lane in Gray. This, this piece of property is off Depot Road, off Wrangler Drive. There's a right-of-way called Wrangler Drive off Depot Road, and this is a backlot. This, just to give you a little information, this lot used to be larger. My father, Dennis Durgan, owned it, and he broke it up and gave two lots away. This is the last parcel of the lot. I'm trying to sell this lot, I have it under contract. Because the land has always been family land, I don't believe a title search had ever been done. Lucky for me, a title search was done. And you do have a deed which shows verbiage in the Annie Carr deed. When Matthew Morrow bought it from Annie Carr, the last paragraph says that the town of Gray could buy it as a cemetery if they so fit. So the title search will not sign off on this unless I get either the town to say you want to buy it or you don't want to buy it. So that's basically where I'm at, and, and we are at a closing, which this is holding up a closing because of the title search. So I appreciate your seeing today and hopefully getting a resolution to this soon.
All right, any questions on the material by anyone?
No.
Really a question, just, just noting that as you, as you mentioned, this is a backlot, so there's no road frontage on this.
There is no road frontage, no. There's a right-of-way that goes through Betsy Durgan's property. It's a fifty, fifty, fifty-foot right-of-way. And it also, the back of it is the pit. It used to be Durgan's San Agro, which is now called Pit.
Any other questions?
I mean, I've, given where this is and our need for a cemetery, I don't really see a need for, you know, using this as a cemetery.
I see no, no desire to purchase this for any reason, actually, but Nate?
Hi, uh, thank you for your conversation with me and email today.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that you get exactly what you need. And so my suggestion is that you ask your attorney to write exactly the letter, exactly the instrument that you need, and put some signature lines in for the council, and we'll bring it to the meeting.
On the, on the sixteenth.
Yeah, the packet hasn't been done yet, so if we could get that tomorrow.
Yep.
Or, or first thing Thursday morning.
Yeah, we could get it into the packet.
I just don't want to guess at what you need and then have the wrong thing and hold your closing up any further.
Yeah, I haven't had him do anything because I didn't know.
Well, yeah, so let's just, I, I need to officially just straw poll the council before we do that. Is there any objections to the town signing the letter stating we do not have any interest?
No, I have no objections.
Dan?
No, I don't, I don't see any problem with it. I mean, clearly it was done, you know, a good seven, five years ago by the looks of it, as near as I can see, so.
And it was a fifteen-acre lot at that time.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Now it's, it's a two-and-a-half acre lot.
And it probably had road frontage at that point, too, yeah.
No objection.
And I don't either. Doug, do you have something to add? And you'll need to sign in before you leave, okay?
Doug Webster, Planning Director. Obviously, the decision is in the count, the council's lap. If the intention is to keep the title clear in perpetuity, then whatever her attorney drafts should have a notary on there. The registry won't accept anything that's not notarized. So if you're trying to get the title clear from here out.
Signatures and notaries.
And notary, there's a li, there's a little addendum, excuse me, at the end for the notary. That way it'll hold water for title search purposes.
Okay, thank you. That also means we cannot sign it unless we're in front of the notary, but there are some in, at the clerk's office.
Yeah.
This is set for a vote on Tuesday night, so if we can, like Nate advised, if we can get the letter tomorrow to get into our packet for Thursday, and then Tuesday night, we'll take it up and vote on it, and then at that point, we'll be able to sign it. So if we don't have a notary present at the meeting, we'll have to come in that Wednesday to, to sign it so that it can be provided to you.
Okay, that's fine.
Any, any other comments or questions?
No.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure, it was a surprise.
I'm sure.
Yeah. Yeah. So people get the insurance now. Next item on the agenda is the water quality phosphorus ordinance. And if you haven't figured this out yet, for the agendas on our workshops, I am trying to resurrect items that we have previously talked about so we can reset, given that we have spent a ridiculous amount of time on the budget. And some of these conversations have happened several months back. And this will give us some update to help facilitate the conversion of the tracking workbook and help facilitate the new session discussion on workload and priorities. For this one, I actually have four separate buckets here, and so I'm just going to kind of review them quickly and make sure we're on the same page to start, and then we'll go through updates. The first being that we had agreed that we would likely start with implementing phosphorus standards in the shoreland zone first, and then expand that out into the watersheds and then continue to expand it outwards. We had a tentative agreement or plan to use the Wyndham and Falmouth ordinances and potentially work with Cumberland County Soil and Water or GP Cog to help create or combine those for a Gray-specific phosphorus ordinance. That was bucket one. Bucket two was to also discuss, and this was at Doug's recommendation, to review or increase our stormwater standards for Federal Clean Water Act or CWA, non-attainment watersheds and subwatersheds. And this is related to the capacity, the, what is that permit?
A DEP stormwater or site location of development.
Yep, and so that was a separate bucket for us to work on. Then the third bucket was the budget information that we were trying to work our way through. We have an unpaid FY twenty-two invoice or unknown whether or not we have the funds carried forward to pay an FY twenty-two invoice. We have FY twenty-three funding in the current budget of five thousand dollars for Pleasant River testing. I did go back and look at the FY twenty-two budget, and we had budgeted five thousand for Pleasant River testing and two thousand for Thayer and Pronum Scott testing. So there was seven thousand in the FY twenty-two. Whether or not that got spent or carried forward is one question.
CIP.
Yes, CIP, these are all in CIP. And then in our current FY twenty-two, we have, we left in five thousand of annual water sampling as a placeholder. So, and then the fourth bucket is the timeline. You know, what, when do we, when do we want to start seeing? What priority and how soon can we get the phosphorus standards or the increased stormwater standards? Does that co, do you think that covers it? That's what I had in my notes. So I don't, do you want to start with the budget piece because that will drive the rest? Or start with something else?
I'd like to let you know what I know.
Okay.
I had a phone conversation with the town audit firm today at two fifty, where we, I explained that there were several items budgeted for use of carryforward funds from FY twenty-two and asking again for the status of that because, you know, I've got a good twenty items like this that need to be addressed. And we had a conversation about that for which I don't have an answer for you just yet. I'm sorry, I'm going to have to do more work to get a definitive answer.
Okay, so the, the status of those funds are impending still.
Just one clarifying point on the FY twenty-four budget amount. I, I thought we had set aside ten thousand dollars in case we did not have enough for the.
All right, can you hold on? Let's just stay in the years and we'll, and I did grab it, and this, my, these are just my notes. So it's possible that, and I think Dan actually has the CIP schedule, so we can look at it. Okay, so for FY twenty-two, like I said, I had the five thousand Pleasant and then Thayer, but not Pronum Scott, I always say that wrong.
Two thousand.
Two thousand for that. Okay, so for a total, it was seven K. All right, and then FY twenty-three is the current testing, and that's just the five thousand. That was the pre, and, and just for those that weren't on the council, prior to FY twenty-two, that we had entered into an agreement with, was it Wyndham?
Cumberland County Soil and Water.
Okay, and, and to do specific testing, and it was payments of five thousand. And so FY twenty-two was payment one, FY twenty-three was payment two. And it's, do you have a status on that? Have they, has that been invoiced? Do you know if that money?
The second payment?
The FY twenty-three, yeah, the current budget.
I think that the second, the first payment is the one that's in arrears.
Yep, that's that one, so FY twenty-three, the current budget had five thousand in CIP for the second payment.
I think that has been paid.
So that's been extended.
It's the FY twenty, the first payment that was CIP budgeted in FY twenty-two that I believe is outstanding.
Okay.
So we're holding, just as you said, we're holding the, the five thousand in the twenty, twenty, current twenty twenty-three budget as an insurance policy, if you will, if we are not able to use the FY twenty-two.
If it wasn't carried forward.
To pay, to pay for the first invoice.
Right.
Who's on first, what's on second?
But if we, if we were billed for and paid the FY twenty-three budget, the second payment.
Yes.
We, we don't have funds in this current budget to pay the FY twenty-two arrears.
We have it in the FY twenty-four.
Right, but.
So there, yeah.
But weren't, weren't we also having additional testing in FY twenty-four?
Right, and that's the ten.
We needed two payments for FY twenty-four.
That's the ten thousand, yeah.
So we have ten thousand in FY twenty-four or five, okay, because you said five.
Yeah, the amount the manager put in was five, amount council is ten thousand.
Okay.
I just didn't update my notes.
Got it.
And that five thousand is on hold pending the FY twenty-two audit. If the FY twenty-two was not carried forward and we expend the five to resolve the FY twenty-two, that leaves five for the phosphorus ordinance work if we can get Cumberland County and, and/or GP Cog to do that for us.
So I've kept Cumberland County apprised that we're on top of it.
Okay, Dan?
Just a, can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
So in the FY twenty-four budget, you said there's ten thousand dollars?
Well, that's what I have on my last sheet.
Yeah, that's what I thought was, I don't have the, I don't have it in front of me.
I have it right here, Dan.
Let me see that on the spreadsheet.
So.
It's this bad boy.
Okay.
So if you look at the third column, the first column was the amount initial, then the manager change, and then the third column is the final council change, and that went up to ten thousand. And that was, that was because of what Krista said, because we still did not have an answer on the FY twenty-two carryover. And so we wanted to make sure that we had that five thousand available to pay them.
I understand the.
Logic.
I understand the logic, I'm looking for the numbers, that's.
Okay. Well, you and I can, yeah.
Yep.
If I may?
Yeah.
That's not village stormwater, that's, that's testing.
No, 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 that's testing.
Just trying to make sure, there's a lot of stormwater.
Well, and.
Yes, and we moved most of, yeah, most of that, we moved to TIF.
TIF, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. So this one is, is under annual water sampling, Pronum Scott Regional Land Trust. That's what the line says on the CIP.
Okay, thank you, thank you for the clarification.
The stormwater feasibility and all that other stuff was moved to TIF. So we're pulling that out of TIF funding.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So if, have you had any conversations with Cumberland County Water and Soil about the phosphorus ordinance?
I have not pending. I've kept them apprised that we're working on the outstanding invoice, but I haven't broached the subject of the phosphorus pending getting an answer on the FY twenty-two funding.
Right, so we have five thousand set aside though in the, in the budget to help with this, move this topic forward. So I think it would be helpful for us to get some sort of idea from them and/or GP Cog about, one, their capacity to do the work for us, and two, if they can do it, what's the fee look like?
Okay.
If there is a fee, I, you know, I don't know with GP Cog.
GP Cog, it might be covered by our membership dues potentially, yeah.
So that would be my recommendation for the first bucket is to get some feedback from them because it's all well and good that we're saying we're going to use them, but if they come back and say, well, we won't be able to get to it until the end of the year, that, then you guys might want to do a plan B to keep it moving.
And I, I, one of the, one of my hopes, particularly for the phosphorus, maybe not for the increased stormwater standards for the non-attainment sheds, but for the phosphorus, many years ago, I had to administer those as the Assistant Code Officer in Falmouth. But the ones that are particularly helpful, this is the point, are ones that are very prescriptive. It's not really appropriate, reasonable, to ask every homeowner to get an engineer to figure out the, the pre-development runoff and post-development runoff. And so I haven't looked at Wyndham's and Falmouth's in detail, but I'm hoping to have very prescriptive, on-point, just user-friendly descriptions that regular homeowners can apply that will hopefully have as much of an impact as they can to reduce the post-development phosphorus runoff. If you don't have those, it makes it very difficult to administer.
Right, yeah, Dan?
I guess I'm, I'm unclear the scope that we're, that we're working on here. And I think, I think we need to be very clear about the scope because that's a rabbit hole that we could go down that would just go on and on. I mean, as far as the phosphorus issue is concerned. The goal of the ordinance is to what?
Minimize phosphorus runoff into the water. And so that's why we're starting with the shoreland.
I understand that part. But what are we, what are we looking to put in place for an ordinance, I guess is my.
Well, I think that because Wyndham and Falmouth have adopted phosphorus ordinances already on their half of the lakes, that we are going to try to take a look at that and try, and that's the question for the council is, is if they take that and come, you know, combine the two or find the similarities and say, okay, how do we apply this to Gray? They're going to bring that to you, and you guys are going to have to decide, is that too much, too little? Somewhere in the middle? You know, you're going to have to come up with that. To Doug's point, it has to be something that the homeowners are going to be able to actually do and understand, or it's not going to be successful.
Well, it seems to me before we, before we talk to GP Cog or anyone else, we ought to at least understand what the other two towns are doing. I mean, do we need to involve GP Cog?
Well, we're doing that because Doug and Kristin don't have the capacity.
Well, also, the, what was it? The Little Sebega Lake Watershed Association had a gentleman here that reviewed those, I think at least one of those ordinances.
Both, I think.
Yeah, a while ago, I'm, I'm sure we could find it again. But I think it had mostly to do with property owners making improvements on their land that would prevent runoff, so it's not. that would prevent runoff, so it's not, it's not public, public led. But I think the idea is to match the other towns, especially on the lakes that we touch together, so that the water quality of those lakes are consistent across the whole body of water.
No, I guess.
But Dan, what I think, I understand where you're getting at is if, if we're saying, okay, Cumberland County Soil and Water or and or GP cog are gonna take the lead on theirs, the first step really is for them to have a workshop with you to just kinda go over both those and get, and drill down on that scope.
Yeah, I guess I, 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 yes, maybe, it just feels like.
I think it's.
It feels like this is easier than we're making it.
Yeah, I think it will be considering Falmouth and Wyndham are already done. It's probably gonna be fairly easy.
I mean, we're not gonna write something completely different.
And if you, I, I've been to a couple of the lake association meetings for that and the standards and what, what they have for solutions to help people comply are pretty well-known. So it's not like a homeowner's gonna be like, oh, I can't, you know, they, they have methods and and ways to help mitigate. So it's just a matter of getting it down on paper.
Yeah, and.
But I thought, for the reason why we had involved or thought about GP cog is that through their climate resiliency efforts and their efforts to try to assist members, that they were just like, we're here to help, we can help you get this done.
They've really been advocating, like assisting with ordinance writing to supplement the capacity we have in town. I think this would just, because it involves multiple towns in their member network, I thought it, I thought it was a good fit for GP cog since it.
Yeah, to me, it makes more sense in, in some fashion to go to GP cog than it does to soil and water folks.
Okay, so why don't we, do you wanna reach out to them and talk to them about that? Or maybe have a call with Doug and whoever the contact is?
I'm not su, I don't know if it would be Matt Pimful or someone else, but yeah.
I don't know who that would be.
But it also makes me wonder where OEC is at.
Well, yeah, I still would run through them, I guess, but here's the issue. Doug is, is Route one fifteen and Main Street.
Yeah, I understand all that.
Kristen's trying to get clean, and we're, our list is pretty big. So if we've got this extra capacity that can help us and it's something straightforward that doesn't take a whole lot of gray-specific history and knowledge, then we need to outsource that if we can.
Yeah, I think the other, I think the bigger issue I'm getting at is that we've lost our ability to write ordinances ourselves, for the most part, in part because of Main Street and one fifteen, and we have to figure out how to fix that.
Well, hopefully, if we can get an MOU and in the next six months, which we have to in order to meet that federal grant application deadline, finalized designs, your capacity is gonna open up again. But I see what you're saying. And I, I guess that's a good question, Doug, now that we've restructured the OEC as a staff committee, has that helped or?
I think, I think it has, yeah. And together with Kristen's assistant Claire, I mean, that's taken some of the workload just as we quasi anticipated, it's taking some of the workload off of Kristen and Claire's helping with that. If Planning Board gets, Planning Board hasn't been super busy, which has enabled Kristen to help out a lot.
Yeah.
If I may, just back to, back to the phosphorus, the re, at some point, we should probably involve Cumberland County. And the reason that I say that is, the way phosphorus works is that you take the entire watershed and you look at the soils and every acre is assigned, assigned a certain number of pounds per acre. And what Cumberland County can do, and with all due respect, GP cog may not have that in their wheelhouse, would be to look at the existing conditions, to look at the slopes, and they may need, they may need to modify or strengthen the standards that other municipalities have adopted, given the, the gray-specific instances, particularly in shore land. So that's why I've tried to keep Cumberland County on the radar.
They should stay in the loop, absolutely.
At some point, yeah.
And that's a good conversation, I think, to have with the GP cog's resource cuz we do share a couple lakes, but we have Crystal Lake and Notch that are, that are just ours. And so.
Well, much.
Yeah.
Yeah, Notch just shared with Raymond.
Is it, oh, Raymond, so we gotta keep, just a smidge, that's right. So, yeah, I mean, and so to that point, we may need to have stricter standards around one or the others, depending on where they're located and what's going on.
Soil, slopes, existing development, yeah.
That's good to know. So it may be a little more complicated, Dan. We thought it was easy for about a half second here.
Yeah, no, I'm just in search of.
In search of a solution.
Yeah, just a path forward that, where things will actually be finished in my lifetime.
Or could be.
Could be finished in my lifetime.
I was gonna say, finish in your next term. Come on, be optimistic, an eternal optimist.
Yeah, I used to be.
Or it, it could be phased too, that's the other thing.
Yeah.
We could adopt the boilerplate and then if there, once we have some money, okay, Cumberland County, here's what we have on the books, it's based on Wyndham and Falmouth. Do you see any adjustments that need necessary? Let's start to get something on the books, that's what I'm hearing you say, counselor.
Yeah, and then you have shore land and, and, you know, we're gonna need to expand that out further throughout the town cuz phosphorus is not just a problem on lakes. There's streams and other bodies of ponds, et cetera. Okay, so Krista, you'll work on a contact and then we need to set up some sort of conversation between them and keep CCWS involved too. Quite frankly, Dan, if they come back and give us a timeline and capacity, you know, that might drive it too, might change everything.
Yep.
And whether we have five grand or ten grand too, you know, especially with testing and other things, will probably drive a little of it too. Okay, and then the storm water standards. So does that have to be done after all of this Main Street?
The.
Modeling and whether or not the outflow, or is this something that's separate?
It's kinda separate.
Okay.
And so what's happening is there is some land that is not yet developed that's pretty much to the west of the village, that is not currently developed, but probably will be developed at some point. And it's, it's probable that at some point, we don't know exactly when, the town's gonna trigger MS four. A real-world example, the stream crossing West Gray Road just this side of Howells. If there are, if there is up gradient commercial development that ends up at that crossing, the town with MS four is going to inherit, if you will, the cleaning up of that storm water because that's in a non-attainment shed. So the, the point here is that the DEP storm water standards of specifically with regards to quality, not quantity, quality, aren't really sufficient to meet MS four standards for a non-attainment shed. So what's the answer? The answer is to get some tighter storm water quantity and quality controls above DEP standards so that when and or if those areas get developed, the storm water is cleaned up, if you will, on site and the town doesn't inherit the cleaning up of that storm water when it crosses the public infrastructure. So that's the goal, is to get the, these tougher storm water standards on the books before these properties get developed. As much, and DEP is preaching the same thing, understandably. If you can clean up wastewater on site rather than getting it all concentrated and putting it in, into a big huge infiltration pond, that's the way to do it. So that's what, that's why I've been trying to advocate for that, is looking ahead for the long term.
When you say onsite, you mean at each individual property similar to Cumberland Farms system? Is that, is that what you mean?
Similar, or obtaining an easement on an adjacent property, something like that. But once it gets into channelized flow and it becomes the, the town's problem, it, it's a bigger problem to solve and it's at taxpayers' expense. And so I think there's a straight-faced argument that if there's gonna be additional commercial development, then it, and we're headed towards MS four, it seems to be appropriate to at least have a conversation about doing what we can to get that storm water taken care of on site, not at the expense of taxpayers.
That, that, though that runs counter to the effort that we're doing here in the village with regards to storm water.
Meaning hooking up, hooking everything up to one system.
It feels like we're, we're working it in opposite directions here. We're working in the village to try and allow for storm water to be held offsite, but what you're telling us is that the risk is that if we don't have the rules in place for people to treat it on site, that we're exposed to a financial risk. So I'm caught between those two thoughts.
And there's quality and there's quantity, as you know, and then there's the, you know, the ex-year storm. And it, what may end up happening when the dust settles with Main Street is even if we have increased capacity, they, there may be the necessity to have on-site temporary storage to reduce the peak flows, as an example.
Yeah.
So it may be a hybrid, I guess.
Well, it could.
So could you, you're talking about sta, standard by zone, standards by zone. Because if you're, if we're allowing them to, to Dan's point, if we're allowing them to hook up to the main system here in the village to help increase density, which is the reason why we would be doing that, then those standards wouldn't apply. And but if they're building in West Gray, the standards would apply.
Yep, and not to split hairs, I, I would recommend that it be considered by, by watershed so there could be a watershed overlay that would be independent, if you will, of, of the zoning district.
That makes sense.
But you're, you're exactly right, that's, that's the concept. If the storm water, the storm water west of the Turnpike is arguably going to be handled differently from that in the village. The bottom line in the village is there's not space to have big infiltration. The only thing we can do in the village is delay the peak flows just as we did within the confines of, for Cumberland Farms.
Well, and we also have the ability to put a fee structure in place too for the use of that, which can include the costs of mitigating the issues with results to additional stormwater, so I mean that.
I think that's split out too on our list.
Yeah, that would be a consideration.
And then I think there's a separate where we should definitely have some type of fee.
Yeah, we'll have to make sure that we don't.
Especially in the village.
That those don't get unlinked.
Yeah.
When it comes time to talking about fees.
Special Assessment District or, or similar.
Yeah, especially in the village.
The other piece, to piggyback on that, is the conversation with MDOT to get them to clean up the mess at Howells and, and that side of two oh two.
What did you call that fee, sorry, what did you just call the fee?
A special assessment district.
Go ahead, sorry.
I mean, there's problems with silt and sand and, and that's not a situation that we created per se, as I understand it, and.
Understood.
Nah.
It's a complicated bear.
Oh, it's a complicat, it's, it's like the storm water system all over again. They see no evil, hear no evil, speak no evil, but.
They are, I mean, I, I think in order for them to do what they wanna do, they're aware that they're gonna have to do something. How much of the something is gonna be the question, Dan? Because it is on Ernie's, it is, and, and I pressed them in that meeting because it's really holding up all the work as far as the modeling. Cuz something has to be done there. And who's doing it and what, what is done? And what capacity is left when it's done is gonna drive everything else.
Yes, and there's other negotiated things that we can't talk about in public.
No, but that in particular should be in our MOU framework, I think, as one of the items. So.
Yes.
Next steps really are for us to develop a memorandum of understanding with the DOT on these projects and Nate is, you know, open that conversation. And I think that that's an excellent one to be in there so that there's an understanding specifically on who's doing what and the timeline and the order.
Well, I'd be even just satisfied with delineating responsibility to start. I mean, the, the timeline is maybe hard to figure out. But I also do think we need another executive session on those issues that surround that.
Yeah, I'm sure there's gonna be more.
Yeah, I think there's some now, actually, that, that would warrant another executive session.
It would be awful, I don't know if we can stub that in on your Tuesday.
Well, for, we're, you're gonna, we already have an executive session set, by the way, for our meeting next week. It hasn't, the agenda has not been done yet for that. So we're gonna have to start at five thirty next Tuesday, five thirty, everyone mark that down, please.
Sixty-five.
Yeah, but I don't, that, we've gotta leave time for the reason that was set and I have no way of knowing how much of that time's gonna be used up. I mean, you can put both on the agenda.
Okay, the agenda was already published, so we'd have to reset it.
Okay. It was published today?
John just did it.
Oh, he just did.
Text him about.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, short answer, counselor, yes, I would, I would love the opportunity to.
Yeah, but that.
But yeah, I understand the mechanics of that.
The mechanics of that, isn't gonna work, that's not gonna be enough time.
Probably not.
It might be enough time to at least outline what, what the conversation, how the conversation needs to expand.
Text him right now and have him add a second statute cuz it's still Tuesday and.
Just one more thing, Doug, I'm sorry, you can go after me. What, can you just refresh my memory on what the threshold is for meeting MS four? I forget, I forgot what that was.
It's primarily population-based, but also density-based. It's, it's a, it's a.
Convoluted is the word I would use.
It's population-based on the town.
School funding formula.
Yeah.
And hopefully it's not that complicated.
It's population-based on the whole town though, not just in one area of the town.
That's correct, that's correct.
That's the easiest marker, but, yeah, they explained to us that gray, gray's tipping point will probably be the other mark or not, population.
The cumulative impervious, yeah, that's kind of a melding of those two, as I understand it.
Who's measuring? Who's measuring the cumulative impervious surfaces in town?
DEP.
Yeah, I think it was a municipal sanitary sewer separation at some derivative of that.
Yeah, that was my understanding last update, was we're likely gonna get, that's gonna be our tipping point before we hit ten thousand.
Who notifies us of that, the DEP at some point?
EPA likely through DEP. There are many DE, Army Corps and EPA responsibilities that are, as a practical matter, administered by DEP through an MOU between DEP and federal government.
Okay.
Army Corps, Army Corps is a perfect.
Same DEP, but it's coming down from the feds, I got it, okay.
I shouldn't, but so much of that was acronyms that.
Sorry.
No, it's not your fault.
It's my world.
It's not your fault, but it's becoming a whole nother language.
Well, he has to use them cuz some of these lang, the titles are ridiculous.
No, I'm not, I'm, I'm in an odd mood tonight, I apologize upfront.
It's okay, we're all like still recovering, so.
Feeling a little toasted, but it's, I'm not sure.
Yeah, never mind.
Anyone would understand what you said.
All right, so this, this is on the tracking workbook already, the stand, updating these standards. And I think I better understand that the rules will probably be by watershed and that we really need to differentiate the work that we're doing on Main Street, which will probably require a different approach in the village versus other watershed areas. And the fee, I believe, is listed there as a separate item, but I will verify that. And we'll be looking at the workbook this Friday. And I just looked at it today, so I'm pretty sure it's set up that way, but we'll make sure.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah, watershed and subshed in some instances.
Yeah.
Because sometimes you can have the, the watershed in attainment, but you've got a subshed that's not. And in that instance, you need to focus energies on the subshed that's, that's not, you know, not attainment, they call it.
Would, would all of that be accomplished? Like I'm trying to think, when you look at the, the GIS maps for the town, would that be like a layer all into itself one day, do you think?
I, if I were to write, recommend the script, it would be a watershed overlay.
Overlay on the zone.
That would be, that would function independently from zoning district boundaries.
So it would be another layer on that map?
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna say, Al is our GPS.
Yes.
We've been talking layers and open space and he took another advanced class, so I'm gonna answer yes.
Remember, overlays can either add things or take them away. It's just a different set of standards, people think it's just one, it's, it doesn't have to be.
All right, any other thoughts or questions or comments on this topic? All right, all right, I'm gonna try to. I'm probably gonna type up the notes and then send them to you, Doug. I'm probably gonna type up the notes and then send them to you, Doug.
Happy to help.
Make sure I don't type anything wrong.
I thought your summary at the beginning was spot on, as the British would say.
All right. Coronation week, I get your reference.
In keeping with the theme.
Pete says, please get to mine so I can leave.
You're smiling, we must at least be entertaining.
He's interested in water, but not stormwater.
Not that type of water.
Unless you can draft it.
No, we use the stormwater to fill the cisterns that we're hoping to build.
That's right. So the next item on our agenda is to revisit our fire cistern and public safety ordinance.
How'd you like that for segue?
That's pretty good, I put water, I put them together. Okay, so this is item three. And on this, I'm just gonna kind of review the summary of what the council had kind of tentatively come to, um, an agreement, which was that we were compelled to work towards developing some type of impact or fee structure to support public safety, so it would be a public safety fee or impact fee. And that would allow the town, the public safety department in more particularity, to determine where, how many and size of cisterns in town, um, versus, and that could include, um, the requirements that are currently, um, the, the requirements currently in place requires specific cisterns in subdivisions.
Right, the ordinance requires, has a calculation for the number of fire, for the number of cisterns needed, depending on how many dwellings there are in the subdivision and how far away they are from each cistern. So my suggestion is to take that out of.
The subdivision ordinance, create the public safety ordinance.
Right, but the developers of subdivisions would pay into that fund. And, and inevitably, some of these cisterns would be built in those subdivisions, for sure. But my goal is that it builds some capacity for public safety to be able to put cisterns in other places in town that are not well-served, that they have concerns about.
Right, so it would be that, and then it would also be addressing the maintenance of cisterns. And so per, the developer would pay the initial impact fees. Public safety would determine best what, what cisterns were needed in maybe that specific development, but also to fund.
Yes.
Cisterns throughout town that are underserved areas.
The last part of that is that all the existing fire cisterns, I think, should become property of the town.
Okay, I was getting there. And then, so that would be the initial fee, and then the home associations would be required to pay some type of annual maintenance fee. Right now, it's their responsibility solely, so instead, they would pay a, a maintenance fee and public safety, and the town would own cisterns and be responsible for their maintenance.
Possibly, that could be one outcome, yeah.
Okay.
The, the, one of the issues is that much like Public Works has problems sometimes getting hold of, hold of road associations and knowing who to contact when they have issues there, Public Safety has issues with fire cisterns that are the responsibility of homeowners' associations, that maybe even don't even know they have a fire cistern that they're supposed to take care of, who knows? I, I think personally, that fire cisterns are in lieu of being able to put in a hydrant in that area, obviously. And I think that it makes sense for the town to own and, and maintain that infrastructure. It does so with the hydrant system. And I think that, um, it should do so with the fire cisterns too. That way, public safety has complete control over the whole network.
All right.
That would, that's my suggestion, whether that makes sense.
Yeah, I was gonna say, now that we've laid the groundwork, Pete?
I just, I just had one comment on language. Um, some of the older sys- um, the older subdivisions have fire ponds rather than cisterns, and we should make sure we include those.
Include ponds.
Well, that, I think, means to be part of the discussion, 'cause I'm not so sure they should be included.
Because they're, they're harder to maintain.
Right, but if, if HOA's converted their fire ponds to cisterns, then I would think at that point in town, time, the town should take it over.
Okay.
Um, but I mean, that's all, maybe we will have them take over fire ponds, I don't know, but that's just my thought.
Okay.
Okay, hold on, let me just write fire ponds.
I had a friend in high school that could do shorthand.
I actually could do shorthand, I used to be able to write over a hundred words a minute.
She was brilliant, no one could read her notes.
And I literally graduated, got hired at Liberty Mutual, and they were like, do you know we have recording and stuff now? Never used it, never used it, not once.
And now we know a little bit more about.
Now you know a little bit more about me. Okay, so remove cisterns out of subdivision, create a new public safety ordinance. Developers would still pay, but they'd pay some type of fee, public safety fee. Public safety would then be in control about deciding whether something had to go in that new subdivision or, and/or using that fee for, to fund some other cistern. Cisterns would be town-owned and we'd be responsible for the maintenance. Home associations pay the annual fees for the maintenance. Existing cisterns would have to be discussed, transitioned, because currently they're not owned. And then fire ponds would be a whole other game. Pete, your thoughts?
Peter Hump was the Assistant Chief of Public Safety. So I know, so fire ponds, we don't allow those to go in new anymore, because they are so unreliable.
Right.
And I can tell you that probably half the ones in the town right now do not work, because they're, by nature, they fill up with dirt, especially the ones that are in a broke pond, whatever. And we have many of those that are broken right now that have, that need maintenance, that we can't use. And we've had that issue of who do we track down? 'Cause some of these areas where they're on, in, don't have a homeowners' association that I, we're aware of, or who do we get in contact with? Or they all moved there after they were built, so. Same with the cisterns, we've run into issues with those, where, you know, we go to draft water out of them and we get a hose full of concrete. And again, who do we contact to repair that? So I think that there's, that definitely needs to be clarified on who is responsible for those. And as you said, you know, if we make that, you know, pay into a fee system, then we can be responsible for them, or we have that money set aside to make these repairs, I think is good. As far as where this goes in these ordinances, I've got a, in front of me, I've got a public safety ordinance. It also falls under code, under, uh, sufficient water supply, a different ordinance, so it's gonna have to either be rewritten into a separate ordinance.
So you, the fire, the existing fire safety speaks to cisterns, or?
So there's a public safety ordinance, I don't know if that, that one, I think, that one does not touch on it.
Okay.
But I know that our existing fire ordinance, which was signed into service in nineteen fifty, is trying to be rewritten as well, to kind of include that in it, so I'm not sure where we stand on that. I know that was submitted back in, uh, the date on mine is two thousand and seventeen, as the draft. So I don't know what, where that one went. But that one included a whole bunch of other stuff to include fire alarms and other items as well.
The public safety ordinance was?
The, that one is the fire ordinance, which is chapter two oh two.
Yeah.
And then two oh three, I think, is the public safety ordinance, which is from two thousand one, and it's kind of, I don't know if that one's up for review as well, but that one.
Well, I think what, um, and then we have the subdivisions.
And then we have the one that falls under four oh one, which is under code for, um, sufficient water supply for subdivision and divisions.
Yeah, so I, and, and we just had this conversation with, um, our parking, proposed parking ordinance and our pop-up commercial, um, so it sounds to me like it's the same approach, where we need to take these and, first of all, pull it out of the subdivision and, and, but we'd have to make some sort of reference to it, to go to the fires, or the, I would prefer to call it a public safety ordinance myself.
Yep. Yeah, it would have to be a reference, because it's, it's.
When someone goes to look at it and wants to know what they're responsible for.
Enterprise account.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, it's a sub D, it's like a sub D.
Yeah, I mean, it's just another, instead of recreation, it's, would be one for fire protection.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think that the answer would be, they ought, they should be combined. So the fire ordinance, the public safety, um, into, and it would be great if you guys have updates. I'm sure you must, if the fires nineteen fifty, even the twenty seventeen's probably outdated.
There's a lot of stuff in there, but that, there's a lot of stuff in there about fire alarm systems and commercial properties and stuff, and I think that was a lot of, that needs a lot of discussion.
Yeah, I think the sprinkler, I actually, yeah, I got on the council in twenty seventeen, and I remember there was some discussion just before that, leading up to this draft, and, and I think it got jammed up because of the requirement for sprinkler systems, if I remember right. There wasn't consensus.
Well, and the chief's association's been trying to get that, hammer that away at the state level too.
At the state level too, so, yeah, so I would, what I would suggest, and you're gonna have to speak to the capacity, is for you, if, you know, it's, it's kind of your ordinance.
Right, I mean, the public safety ordinance deals with all the other things too, which involves animal control and all the other things that falls under the big public safety.
Yeah, it's a big umbrella.
Umbrella, so I don't know if it's appropriate to keep water supply under the code enforcement section, where that's where, when they're building these subdivisions, where that needs to fall.
You'd have like a fire water supply section in your public safety ordinance?
It's called sufficient water, that section, is what it's called. And it addresses public water, drinking water, and then fire protection water.
Well, yeah, I mean, Doug.
And that basically tells you whether you either, you either need to have a cistern, a sprinkler, or a hydrant. So I don't know if that's, if it's appropriate to keep it in there, if that's where.
The other, where, where it's ha- where it's housed, whether it's in subdivision or fire, it really doesn't matter. I mean, as an example, you could have a reference in the subdivision ordinance that says the subdivision must meet the sufficient water. Fire protection as detailed in chapter two oh three.
Oh, the public safety ordinance?
Just a quick, quick side note, the, if, basically what you're talk- if I'm understanding this, what you're talking about is basically a public safety, fire protection, impact fee. Um, the courts have kind of held that there has to be, they call it a rational nexus, there's gotta be a connection. I guess my point here is that if you have developer X that comes in for subdivision Y, you probably, unless there's a nearby water supply, you're probably gonna need to do something that directly benefits that project. Now, maybe you could take some of it and put that towards another fund, but there should be a connection. The lawyers always say, there should be a connection between the impact fee and the benefit to the party that's paying that.
Well, let me.
For, just real quick, for instance, in two of the last three, or maybe three of the last three subdivisions, the letter of the ordinance would have required three cisterns in those subdivisions. But in all of those cases, the chief has allowed two cisterns, from just a practical standpoint. In, in my mind, that was an opportunity for, you know, us to collect on three cisterns. We would have built two for the subdivision, so there's your, there's your return.
Perfect example.
And then that would have provided us with three cisterns that you folks could put in the places you worry about the most. So in my mind, we're sort of losing an opportunity here.
We are, and I, I was just gonna ask that question, is there, has there ever been a subdivision where they're not gonna put at least one cistern? Unless they're on town water.
Unless they're on town water, anything that's being approved now is gonna be approved without some water source.
To your point, if we're gonna charge the impact fee for cisterns, it just needs to be worded in such a way that, you know, this is the standard for subdivisions and the chief will decide, or whomever the representative has you state.
Like I said.
The number that are needed in that subdivision, but we're charging for the total. And if they only need one out of three, or two out of three, then the rest goes in the fund for cisterns elsewhere.
I mean, it's just, it's a pretty specific formula for how much water is needed per dwelling, not to be confused with lot, because if you throw in a bunch of duplexes, then we need more water, so.
I mean, the developers, I'm sure, wouldn't be happy to hear me suggesting this, because, you know, it would, it will increase the cost of the development. But it's, it's part of the trade-off for some of the, um, things that we allow in the subdivision developments too, so I mean, it's, it's, uh, it, it seems inequitable.
Yeah, and as, as, as Doug said, I think as long as we can demonstrate the value or the benefit to the individual paying the fee, then.
I think it's more, I think that's much more direct than our, than our rec-sub D monies have, have been.
Well, and then to, to their benefit with this model, then, you know, they don't care as much, but the home, the people who live there are going to care. With this model, you know, public safety is gonna be more motivated to make sure the cistern is maintained and working than, you know.
Absolutely.
Five, you know, six different turnovers in the house, and nobody knows who's in charge of the cistern and isn't collecting money from the homeowners' association.
Sure the HOAs will be thrilled.
Yeah, just having to write a check and not having the responsibility.
Yeah, just, I was just gonna say that the priority for making these changes is, is probably increasing as we implement LD two thousand and three more.
Yeah.
Because density's gonna increase and, um, the prevalence of duplexes and multifamily homes will also.
Well, and I'm not, I'm not against, you know, having ADUs have to kick into the fund either.
Or duplexes, for sure.
Or duplexes, yeah.
For sure, I think duplexes should, because that is a big tipping point for you, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if they're, if they're, also, if they're putting a subdivision that's in a hydrant, you know, on town water, they can go to sprinklers if that's what they choose. But if they don't wanna put them in all the houses, then they still have to have that other supplemental water source for.
And, and.
The rest.
A lot of duplexes and ADUs are potentially going to be built in, in places that are not a subdivision at this point. And we might need increased water capacity around town to support that development.
Can, can we use the need for water in our ordinance around ADUs?
I think the LD two zero zero three, one of the restrictions was water supply, but was that just like drinking water?
Drinking.
Drinking water. But the rules came out, so maybe, I don't know, they specified.
It, it was silent, to my rec- best, to my best of my recollection, it was silent on fire suppression. It did say it needed to meet local, locally, a local or state, uh, safety building code, so if, if this were memorialized in a updated two oh three, it's probable that it would hold water, unintended.
There's so many things they just didn't think of.
We have a theme tonight, sorry, we're all a little bit.
It, it, it's true, it's like, don't pull any threads, 'cause it'll just all come unravel.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so next steps on this, well, I think the first step is for, perhaps, for you guys to look at that two thousand and one. You said there was already some work going on, on the public safety and the fire ordinance updates.
Well, I have some concerns, th- that ordinance has got, is chock-a-block full.
We're talking about the fire ordinance, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that one is.
Other stuff.
That one has a lot of other stuff in it, and I think that it's probably something that needs to just be looked at on its own, along with.
It's a heavy lift.
Yeah, and, and so do a separate sect, whatever, however we end up putting, wherever we end up putting this, this should be standalone.
Right, 'cause I think that the revision of the fire ordinance has most of the items that are in the public safety ordinance from two thousand and one. So I think if we just read you the two thousand and one to clarify what we wanna do with the cisterns, and then, and do that, that one, and then we'll leave the fire ordinance.
Separate.
For separate for another time.
Okay.
'Cause it's gonna have to be visited, like I said, with the fire alarms, commercial buildings. All that stuff is in that one, and it really needs to be broken down.
Okay.
Piece by piece, I think.
So you guys would take a stab at the cistern piece and then work with Doug?
Yeah, I think that's probably the best way to do it.
And then when you guys are ready, you just let us know and we get you on workshop. So you can come before and kind of give us the gist of it, we can give you some initial feedback.
So, just a suggestion, one way to go about this would be to come back to the council at the workshop that you appropriately suggested, with some bullets. This is where we're headed, this is how we're proposing to handle subdivisions, this is how we're.
Yeah, don't bother to put all the fancy language in until you get our thumbs up on it. We'll make your change at eight times.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you staying.
No problem.
Okay. Yep. That is that, okay, next item is our little tax mailer. Marty, uh, minute here, but, so we're looking at, this is really the, um, one page that, um, Dan is working on for us. We're trying to get a summary of the current FY twenty four budget and the impact to, uh, taxpayers, so that we can get that information out to people before they start voting. And I believe, Dan, you have a.
Yeah, you have a sheet that's kind of.
So one, one side is the operations?
Yeah, one side is operations and revenue, and the other is CIP.
Thank you, Doug.
Good night, Doug, thank you.
Thank you.
One thing. So, in the past, if you, if you remember what the flyer looks like, page two of the flyer had,
This.
Yeah, had the, the whole spreadsheet with all of the individual departments broken into the subheadings, required. I keep saying this, I, I hope it's accurate, required by the state, because it keeps appearing on the, on the warrant the same way every year, or pretty much the same way every year. I frankly don't know why we do it this way, because I think it's really confusing to voters, but, uh, it's my understanding, we don't have any choice in the matter, so, if that's, if, if my understanding is wrong, please correct me, because I, I think we should change it if, if we have some, some say over it, but.
So you need this, did you, you've got a copy of this thing, did you pull this out? Flip it over, there we go, we're starting there. Do we know that?
Know what?
If the wa- the warrant breakout is mandated, or is that our choice, the categories?
Article five.
Article three and article five, both.
Well, yeah, it varies from, you know, we have this, uh, issue from here to here.
So it has these same categories, and then under CIP, we have this, this might've been just us, or is that?
CIP is us, I believe, but, yeah, I don't know that that's mandated on.
But article three has been that way since I've been on the council. I'll find out.
Yeah, that would be good to know, cause.
Always go through this sort of rigmarole every year, taking the budget and then.
Squishing it.
And then rearranging it so that it fits those headings.
I mean, there may be some general prescription about how it needs to be laid out, but not every town has all of these things, so. I'll, I'll talk to Alyssa and see, cause I think that if we could keep it within our own, um, department headings, it would be much easier for people to follow along, cause it would translate across.
Yeah.
What's interesting is that in the, in the FY twenty three warrants, we actually put the dollar value of the revenue we expected to get, but we didn't in FY twenty four. It just says that basically, we have permission to spend all the money that we collect from multiple sources, but there isn't a dollar value in there.
No.
But there was in twenty three, um, so again, my question is, you know, I'm, I'm really kind of all about just trying to standardize the process, so we're not reinventing the wheel every year, and that somebody who lives in town for a while, over a period of time, they're gonna see something, they're gonna go, oh, I know what that is, that's the budget, I've seen that before.
Right.
But we keep making just enough changes every year that it, it looks different.
Right.
We're getting better, don't misunderstand me, I, I think we, I think the flyer has helped, we have standardized some of our process, but there's still some room, I think, to improve. So, so that we're not here very long, I guess what I would like to do is go by each of the categories under the municipal operations expense budget. I labeled it that way, because in the warrant, it's referred to as the municipal budget, but we never refer to it when we talk about it as the municipal budget. So, I was trying to build a bridge there, but if we take each one of those under administration, what do you wanna say, what do you want people to, to know about administration?
Well, I've got some.
Yeah.
All right, so for administration, I think we need to mention that we're doing part two of the salary adjustments.
Yep.
Right, maybe the percentage breakdown of what that meant by part two.
I think it was fifty-five, forty-five, so it's forty-five percent this year. Fifty-five percent last. And then, uh, let's see, we have the additional clerk. And that is to assist with capacity.
Yep.
For HR, the rec department, the finance department.
Which, rec department?
Answering phones.
Oh.
So it's to increase the one clerk.
The clerk, the clerk position is.
Yeah, and it's not necessarily that that clerk will be it, but it's to provide additional capacity for HR, rec, finance, and the town manager. So you could say administrative capacity.
Yep.
But I want people to understand that that person being added is actually helping fi- four different departments.
I find that a little confusing, just personally, I, like, the way I would read that is that that person is doing all those different things, that one, one person, I mean.
So why don't we just say we adding a staff member instead of saying clerk? I mean, the bottom line is, I don't, I don't know. You have to identify we're adding a clerk, and you want people to understand what you're getting for it, so is there a better way to word it?
Staff sounds better.
I don't know, I, I think we're maybe having trouble with it, cause we haven't nailed down.
Well, he's gonna reorganize the whole department, so it's kind of hard to say that.
Well, I think just, I think saying, you know, it, you know, we can say that we're adding additional capacity to provide customer service.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I like.
For multiple departments.
For multiple departments.
There we go, that's the way to say it, there we go.
We also had professional development, although, I mean, that was broken down across departments, but I think the bulk of it for HR was under administration.
Yeah, I'm trying to see, it doesn't just, yeah, it isn't separate. So increased training for better customer service.
Yep. Okay.
Um, and then under, obviously under public works.
Sure, let's go down one at a time.
Okay, yeah, that's all I had for admin, I think.
I mean, the spoils, any, I mean, if anybody has any.
Well, municipal expenses has the wage adjustments in it, so.
Yep, and it has.
I would imagine.
So I'd, I'd star those two together and.
You also got your bond payments in there.
No, that's under CIP.
You're right.
The heating fuel is broken down.
It's the insurance, well, insurance.
Uh, insurance is a component of it.
Yeah. But, yeah.
Yeah, what, I, I guess I'm not sure what that bucket means.
It includes.
The vacation sick time, annual wages.
Right, it's, it's your, it's your unfunded liability for wa- sick and salary, uh, sorry, sick and vacation. It is also your, um, uns, um, undesigned fund balance contribution back into the budget for this year.
I would highlight that more than anything, the expense.
Sorry, permit, what was that?
The, the last one was the un- undesigned fund balance that you're applying to this year's budget, the million five.
Oh, no, no, we're putting that under CIP, don't put that there.
I thought that was in.
No, no, it's not.
No, that wasn't CIP.
No.
Okay, that's what we were told to do by the auditor, but we can, we can do that.
No, that's how it got doubled.
That's great.
Remember? Let's not do that again, please, hold on, let me see if I can find the.
So municipal expense was the wage increases, the undesigned fund.
We'll have to look into that.
Yeah.
We'll look into that.
Sit down like that.
You need that eraser.
That's what I love about these, because it's three inches of the print, you know, I actually wear them out.
Okay, you know what, mu- municipal expenses, admin, that's gotta include the IT, right?
I've got it here, you sent it.
It's, it's admin.
Here we go, okay, so, I've got it now, so.
Thank you.
Uh, under administration, you've got administration, admin, community development, assessing code enforcement, general assistance is in administration.
Is communication and info?
That's in administration.
Yes, it is.
Admin, it's in admin.
GA is in admin, and then you have elections, communication, information, and elections. So GA, I think we would wanna put in there, because.
We didn't change that, though.
It, uh, didn't go up much, but.
Is the communication and information in there?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, it, that's the big chunk there, is for the.
Servers.
Servers and the, um, cybersecurity audit.
That's under administration?
Yeah. Municipal expenses, the health insurance, wage increases, is that right, Nate?
Hang on, I'll go over to it, I misspoke about the other thing.
Yeah, I know you did, that's why I was clarifying it for you quickly.
So, under municipal expenses, on this, on the spreadsheet here, it says, is it reserve fund?
Touch screen.
It's, uh, general fund, yeah, it's, uh, reserve, hold on, I'm, I'm across three different pages on the spreadsheet.
So I'm looking at this page here that we talked about this morning.
Right, yeah, that's what I've got.
So, yeah, so.
So I have that labeled incorrectly, I have it labeled as fund reserve.
Okay, and there's also two point four million in there.
Two point four was from last year.
Okay.
Then, and then this year, the amount was the three point one one six, so, we'll, we'll have to work that out.
So your admin piece is gonna be the COLA.
Right, now I'm gonna switch back our, I'm gonna switch back.
Merit, and then your municipal expenses will include the salary adjustment.
That's, that's in the.
It's not in admin.
That's in the general insurance budget, so the wage adjustments, the COLA, the performance wage adjustment, all of that is in the general insurance budget.
Which is the municipal expenses.
Correct, along with health insurance, life insurance, general property and casualty insurance.
Increase for public safety retirement in that?
No, that's in public safety.
So, sorry, go through that, so it's the reserve fund, it's wages, it's the wage increase.
Insurances.
Yep.
And COLA, merit.
Yep, and it's also.
So the wage, wage adjustment is separate from COLA and merit, so people need to understand that, that's why it's a big number, bigger number.
And the vacation and sick time accruals are also in there.
Uh, okay. Okay, yeah. So the library.
You got the ser- okay, so library.
Parks and rec combined.
Okay, I don't think I have anything specific on that. No, I didn't have anything specific on that one, it's a lower number. Public safety, I had the retirement.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's the big.
Main purpose, but also it's the full year of the two additional positions we put in last year. So that's a decision we already made last year.
Plus two positions, yep.
Yeah, fully funding, that's what that is.
And retirement.
And then, public works is the public services admin superintendent.
New driver.
Driver rework.
Super driver. Admin rework.
And that splits that driver position into buildings and grounds, summer months.
Yes. Yes, so that should be noted, yeah.
It's increased capacity for snow removal.
Yeah.
And, and facilities maintenance in the summer, because we've added, um, Libby Hill Trails and the Stillwater, uh.
Yeah, it's just more.
Piece will be on there, more to mow, more to maintain.
Well, the pay, the winter maintenance line item went up. And pay, yeah, and all of that, so, all of the supplies for public works.
There's inflation costs with supplies also in that.
Yeah. Uh, law enforcement is, um, contracted services, so we don't have any.
Uh, there is actually, the cameras is gonna be new, and that's gonna increase our, that's gonna increase our cost even more going forward.
Next year, yep, so that's something to keep in mind.
But as we contract with the sheriff, we don't really have a say in whether or not they buy them.
Yeah, that's kind of my point, is that.
We don't have a say in what equipment they buy.
Oh, absolutely, but I'm just thinking as an explanation as to why the price is coming up, the cost of equipment. And the new camera program, what do they call that, they call those?
Body cams.
Body cams.
Body cams, yeah.
Although those were grant funded initially, weren't they?
They will be, but they're, they're this year, but not next year.
Also, uh, the replacement price for, if I recall correctly, an SRO vehicle, or the other vehicle.
Yeah, jerking out one of those cars is wicked expensive.
Well, and they just run them into the ground, so they don't last. So I like how you have this up here, and then I'm, I think that like the CIP should be right underneath that. Is that how you're going for it?
I was actually going to explode this and put, you know.
Explanation.
Explanation under each section. So that would, that would stretch that out over the page, you know, that might, uh, I think I can do that, and, uh, cause it feels, it, it feels like it would be good to put the.
Oh, you gotta put the.
The info with the number.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that was my thinking there.
Yep.
For the revenue budget.
See, I think we're gonna, that's what I'm saying, I think the revenue should be last.
That's fine.
Only because this is the number they're gonna see on the warrant, this is the number they're gonna see on the warrant. And we're gonna do the same thing with the explanation, and that gives you the, the total, and then it's minus the revenue.
And.
And that, whatever's left over is the contribution we're making to the mill.
Yes.
Isn't the warrant, the wa- expenses listed on the warrant is, is twelve million dollar number though, right?
Yes.
But isn't that? That's our, you, our municipal expenses plus the CIP.
Nope, it's not, yeah, wait a minute.
Wait a minute, that's what it is, it is, that municipal expenses is CIP.
It is, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to say. I'm accounting for your CIP in the budget under municipal, cause that's the way it was done last year.
Yeah, cause, yeah. Right, so what this essentially is saying is, can we, this is our total, we are gonna expend.
Yeah.
And out of that, we're gonna expend this much in CIP, the rest is, yeah, it's operations.
You're breaking it out. Total summary.
I think it was like nine million or so for our municipal.
So maybe what you do, Dan, is you put a little asterisk here, when you blow it out, you put your explanations in there, but you put a little asterisk here, and that is this, includes this CIP.
The municipal expenses.
You could also say municipal expenses i- including CIP.
On the label, but my point is, is to connect that to this, right here.
Right, to that. In your color coding or some other symbol.
Yeah.
Right, because.
See, that's what I was trying to tell you on the phone, I wasn't getting it on the phone when we're talking about the twelve million and three million.
Yeah, I, I confess I was.
But I didn't have this, if I would've had this, I would've, I still would've gotten it.
That's why I made.
So it's not, it's not.
You're not adding those.
No, it's not twelve million plus three million, it's twelve million includes.
No. Includes three million.
So, what I, what I can, yeah, I, I can do that, I can.
Including CIP.
Right.
But CIP.
Or, could we break, we can't.
CIP is, is most of that, see that, this is the kicker, yeah, so, in, in my brain, we should have, CIP should be broken out here, because CIP is three point one million of the three point seven million.
And the municipal expenses, when you look on here, the increase is only three hundred and forty thousand.
So, here's what I would like to do then, if you look at the, no, not chart on the other side, what I would like to do is do all of these, but then add. What I would like to do is do all of these, but then add a. I'll just call it municipal expenses, or maybe there's something else.
Can we, can you split it, can we just split it?
I gotta, I I'll ask.
Well, we can't do it for this.
Because of the, we wanna match.
What 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 I want to do is, I want this three point one million.
So this number here.
To be three point seven nine one. See, what I'm, what I'll, what I'll do is I'll basically say, break out what that is.
CIP.
Differentiate.
Yes.
So you're just gonna add in something that technically isn't CIP on this chart.
Right, and I won't call it CIP anymore, I'll call it municipal expenses and CIP.
This right here.
Yeah, I, that makes more sense.
And and.
It's not, the two together, not including.
I'll have to think about this, but but this is all.
Correct.
CIP.
As it is now.
Yeah, as it is now, it's CIP.
Yeah.
But but I want to add this dollars so that when the total matches what's on this page.
So if you can do that, yeah, if you can do that and then have somehow connected to this. Then I don't think you wanna do any of this, try to do any type of comparison, I think what you're saying to them is, this is the magic number.
Yeah.
So we're taking that twelve and we're subtracting out state, local.
Cause there's no revenue number on the warrant.
Right, and that will get you to that, that's right, you're just gonna, yeah.
I know why my brain was.
I would also submit.
You're sitting alone by yourself, you're like, what the? And then you can transition into this.
Yes, and that will be the final piece of it, and I can get all that on one page, can I have that?
Yeah, and that's the number, see, that's the number right there.
Thank you.
It matches.
Oh, is that your breakdown of the the mill?
I think it might also help to clarify the title of your chart is municipal operation and capital expense budget.
Yeah.
But this is good.
This is really good, and you know what?
But I wonder if I should, I wonder if it should just be municipal expense budget.
You could do that.
Yeah, there you go.
I mean.
Yeah.
Cause it's everything, it's all of it.
Yeah, it's all the expenses, including CIP. Ideally, I think in the future, if we could, it would be great to break CIP out from that municipal heading.
Mo- most people don't know what CIP is, I can just tell you, they're just like, what is, what are we spending, what money are we getting, and what's the final number? That's all they really wanna know.
Well, you're, you're right, I think the majority are gonna want that spreadsheet that I just handed him, how's it gonna impact me? And then a good portion will say, I wonder what I'm getting for that, and we'll, and then you'll have the very small that will be like, we're just doing this four page one. I wanna dig into this, you know what I mean, cause you're gonna have that variance across the town.
Yeah, so I guess then, am I, should should, are we still thinking of doing the four pager?
Don't, I hope we can.
Or do we just?
I think it's gonna be super confusing, I I do like, I do like, maybe you do something that pulls apart pieces that don't, aren't covered here, I like the Warren article explanation.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I like the debt service.
Yeah, the debt service is a nice.
Pretty important, um especially since we're asking, and that's the other thing, for CIP. I had a couple things that I would like you to note that are in CIP.
Well, actually, so you said debt service.
Debt service, I'm jumping all over, debt service, um. And then, where was the other chart I really liked? I like the total mill rate circle.
The pie chart.
The pie chart, I think it's helpful, I think the increase is one thing, but the total is the other, and that's both on, both of those are on my spreadsheet. So maybe instead of doing a second spreadsheet on the total, you do your graph.
Yeah.
Because even though we're taking a larger piece of the increase this year, when you put it in total, we're still not, cause their budget's twenty twenty million.
Did we get a final number on their budget yet, or is it?
Well, I think they have a proposed number, but not until May eighteenth. Yeah, I think that's pretty good, I I do like the, well, everybody's interested in the paving list, but that's hard now because the paving list we published last year, they had to cut, cause we, the costs.
Really short, cause.
I'd like to find something to put in there for Parks and Rec, just cause it is an almost eleven percent increase, so it's about to be able to say.
So, yeah, I'll have to look back at my notes.
There was a staff, staff adjustment for, that was mostly a title change.
Yeah, yep. I'll have to look at my notes, Dan, I'll uh.
Okay.
Okay, so for CIP, I did have a couple things I'd like to put in there, or um general items that you somehow need to get on here cause one, um the bond payment. Um, so I think we need to talk about um the fact that we are doing the panel project.
Yep.
So septic, uh better parking.
Yeah.
Public bathrooms, please mention that, cause I get so many conversations about that. Which will lead to allowing us to expand childcare services and rec offerings. Um, and then, you know, it'll finally allow us to upgrade the basketball court, add the lights. You know, the pickleball court, so, you know, maybe a little blurb about that project. Um, we're also got money in the account in, um, and it's a separate Warren article, I think.
Yeah.
Land acquisition.
Yeah.
So, you know, wanting to fund that and and making the point that that will help facilitate what we need to do on Main Street. Or need to do with our infrastr- with our roads projects, street project, yeah.
But that's not part of the CIP.
No, but that's what I'm saying, I think I, either CIP, but we gotta talk somehow about the big stuff that's in there. Um, and then the other is that in CIP is we have the matching funds for the Libby Hill Road project, which could unlock eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in federal funding. Could, and bold that, please, could, not gonna, but, um, so we've got sixty grand in the CIP as part of our matching funds for that, and if that actually is successful, then it's, you know, it's a small investment for us to be able to do a project that's almost nine hundred thousand dollars or more, close to a million.
That's just making me think of, um, it's TIF money, but the the ball fields.
Yes, the other big pieces, Douglas Field, please put that in there, yeah, we need to have that blurred too. So I think you can identify like the panel project and the matching funds are actually in CIP. And then we also are expending, um, and maybe that's the point, Dan. We're also for Douglas Field relocation, for the land acquisition, for um I don't know how we're gonna say that, professional services for, um I don't know how we would say that, all that work we're gonna be doing. Point being that we're, we've got things in here that are not impacting the mill rate, because we're being fiscally innovative, I don't know how to say it, but maybe you can think about it, little noodle it, that the budget also.
Well, we're, we're lever- yeah, we're leveraging our money.
Yeah, there you go, we're leveraging our money, you know, the land acquisition is uh is being done to reduce, to eliminate the need for interest payments, the fact that we're doing a five-year bond, we're saving the town fifty grand in interest payments. Because the interest rates are high, because we're using TIF and sub D.
We're also, didn't borrow, we're also borrowing from the.
The land acquisition's the three twelve, so we're not expending any interest because we're doing it that way. So I think it's important to put in there that we've taken, we're aware of how much of an impact a mill rate increase has on people's everyday lives, and we've taken steps to try to leverage our money to avoid as much additional expense as we can somehow.
Even the changes in the one fifteen Main Street project are an attempt to.
Yeah.
You know, leverage our money.
Yep, yep.
I mean, it would
Yeah.
More than half the amount of money we would have to shell out just to do Yarmouth Road, if we were to get that, and we could do all of Main Street with that too, so. You know, the, on the first page of this, I do have, like that first column tends to have, um I'll call it more newsy, update stuff, you know, sort of the ongoing things, yeah. So I think some of that could.
Put in there.
Yeah, some of that could go in there, sort of the project updates.
Yeah, and the other, the other CIP I would mention is the the payment we're making for next year.
Yeah, saving.
Yeah, and and you know, the bottom line is, is, you know, one of the things that you should mention too, Dan, I think is that we're trying to maintain our paving, whereas other towns, I've been, you know, following budgets in other towns, and they're not. They're slashing their paving and.
No, that's a mistake.
It is a mistake, because it's gonna cost us a lot more money if we do that, and we're, we're trying to maintain our paving. Not slip further behind, it's not getting us ahead like we'd like necessarily.
Aside from debt, that's the largest expense in the CIP.
It is, it's it's expensive.
Yeah.
It's a big chunk of it.
Debt will still go down a little bit, even with the new bond.
With the new bond, yeah. All right, so squeeze that ten pounds flower in that five pound bag, let us know how you make out.
Sweetest smelling flower in the cupboard.
You sure are glad that you volunteered to do this, how many years ago, and we're just never gonna let you stop.
Well, I've won every uncontested election I've ever been in, so I think I'll be here for three more years.
Yeah, this one would be easier than the first one, cause it was contested when we ran, the first one.
Now, I've won contested ones before, but I've lost some of those things.
Yeah, it's contested, the last two, first and the last, or contested, so. All right, with that, we will end a little early, which is nice, uh oh, I do have one more thing, sorry.
No.
Sorry, schedule, 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 Doug will be very angry with me if I don't settle the schedule. Okay, so last meeting, we talked about June options, June first is gonna be the Yarmouth Road workshop follow-up. And last time we did that at six thirty, and I think it was really well attended, so I would prefer to stick with six thirty rather than seven cause I think it could, those can go long, and that makes for a long night for people.
Twelve.
That's on June first, you're gonna miss that one right then.
Week is up.
It is a Thursday.
Yeah, I will be, I will unfortunately miss that.
Um, and that's more um us inviting them in, and Doug suggested we send letters, which I think is, we're in agreement with.
I'd also suggest you video that one.
Yes, we do tape that one, and it's live streamed, and we'll have the hybrid going, but the basis there will be, um we had the last forum, and they had a lot of feedback, and um Will has updated the plans accordingly, so it'd be great to share the new plans and show them that we've incorporated that, but then to also talk about the rise grant, raise grant.
Yeah.
And our our mo- uh you know, let them know the price tag, and and I'm sure they'll understand, you know. We don't have that total money right now, so we have this other option that could potentially unlock more funding for us.
Which would get a better budget.
We're not really gonna ever have that money unless we bond it, so that's why we need to go for this.
We need to at least try.
Seven.
Six thirty, we're gonna do six thirty, cause last time we did six thirty, and it was pretty well attended, so if we give them enough notice, I think that'll work. And then the second one was gonna be on Monday, June twentieth, and we were waiting on you.
June twentieth or twelve?
Uh twelve, sorry, twelve.
I forgot to get back you, just go ahead and schedule, I'm.
At five?
That's probably fine, I can probably.
Okay, well, let's do five PM then, and then if, we still got time?
What's the topic?
That's gonna be unknown. Might be self-storage slash cannabis, we'll see, cause self-storage, uh Doug would like to have another workshop with us. And I don't have space between now and then, so if I can squeeze it in.
Second reading or something?
Yeah, but we kicked it back to him for the, um, to come up with a sliding scale for the bu- front, fronter buffer. I thought I could put that in as a presentation, but he has requested more time than that, so.
I'm sure that that's complicated.
It might be more complicated than we thought, so, um, yeah, so we have a.
And the cannabis, what are we?
Well, maybe my, I might be able to.
Have you left?
Yeah, it's two, that's a two-hour workshop, and if we're talking about self-storage buffering for more than an hour, I'm gonna leave. I won't have that much time, you guys don't have to chase me down, cause we have spent so much time talking about it, so.
It's the day before your.
Well, no, this is what I'm saying, I'm gonna be like, see ya.
It's your last day.
What are you gonna do? No, I'm just kidding, um, so I'm thinking the second half, uh the second hour will at least get some conversation about what the thoughts are for possible changes, so if if everybody is in disagreement if everybody's in agreement that we don't want recreational storefronts, that's a box checked. If everybody's in agreement that we should consider maybe medical storefronts, then that goes on the list, you see what I'm saying? Just to kinda go through the big things, cause we've had people come multiple times, and if we can tell them right off, forget the recreational storefronts. Or there's not consensus for.
Well, I can tell you right now, you'll never get my vote for recreational storefront, with the current.
What I'm talking about.
With the, the current ordinances and the other things that we're having done, like.
And even with like medical, it's like I can see the argument for medical storefront, but then I don't want to see what happens when you drive in Turner and there's eight of them now.
The other piece of it is, you know, there's not a Home Depot in every single town, I mean, there's not.
I have to go to Wyndham to fill my regular prescriptions, I am not, I can't go anywhere else.
Yeah, so my point is, we'll kinda try to go through the big points that have been raised, and for us just to give some direction. If we find out that there isn't enough consensus for us to change anything, then that's an answer too. So, and there's three people that are gonna be on the council moving forward, so if there's consensus, then there you go.
We've got the votes.
Yeah, and if you, if we end up with one or two items, then we can give staff a little more direction to say, okay, you know. We'll schedule that for a workshop, and these are the two areas we're looking for, so they can be prepared to answer questions and walk through the options.
Um, I'm sorry, go ahead. Would you like to have any um outside experts, industry experts, for any advice, not at this time?
I don't know for to that point.
We, it would be the following workshop where we actually got into the nitty gritty, I mean, they're welcome to attend.
I I won't bring anybody in.
Bottom line is, I'm not a hundred percent sure I'm gonna be able to schedule it that way, because we've got a lot, a few more meetings to go, and like that executive session popped up and I had to move things from that to another workshop, so we'll see. Uh, if I have space, I'd like to get those two things done before you start your new session, just so you can start fresh.
We have our own personnel issue that we need an executive session on, so. That's all I'll say about that, in addition to the, the other, um, one that we talked about earlier. Maybe we can bounce those together.
Well, it's an executive session for personnel, so, yeah.
Yeah, it would be for personnel.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, now we may end, and it's still early, so, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you for this, guys, this helps a lot.